Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the March 12th, 2024, the School Board Regular Meeting and Adoption of the FY25 School Board Advertised Budget. Ms. Cadell, can you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Anders...
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
And Ms. Tice.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cadell. Can we please all stand for the pledge?
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are now at 1.04, Adoption of Agenda. I'm going to seek a motion for adoption of the agenda. Ms. Tice.
I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice, do I have a second? Mr. Anderson, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now we're on to Section 2, Spotlight Team FCCPS. Dr. Noonan?
Yes, thank you Chair Gould, and good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being out tonight. This evening, we have a really great spotlight, and I want to thank John Brett for his work putting this together on the impact of many of our instructional support folks that are both school-based and on the central office team. This is a sampling of some of the great work that happens. We weren't able to capture everyone from the instructional support team, but want to thank those that participated in this video and also let you all know that we have some really great folks out there that are supporting our teachers and supporting our staff in ways that I think are pretty extraordinary. So with that, we'll let it run. We don't have anybody here tonight to talk about it, so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Dr. Bates, but otherwise, this is the spotlight for tonight.
In the heart of our public school system, a dedicated team of unsung heroes is making an indelible impact on student and educator success. The commitment and service of our instructional specialists and coaches go beyond their duties. They embody the essence of educational support and collaboration.
All right, let's start out with one and a half. So show me one and a half.
Marken Epstein is our elementary math specialist who splits her time between Mount Daniel and Oak Street.
So this math class I co-teach with this teacher, so we kind of break it up where we each have a group. We have a couple rotations. I teach a group, she teaches a group. Every group sees both of us, so they really get two teachers during their math class, which is great. I would say the most rewarding part is just being able to work with both teachers and students, coming together with the teacher to problem solve of like, this student is struggling, and how do we best meet their needs, and how can we differentiate our instruction, and just helping them find teaching strategies or resources. And similarly with students, like working with students when they are struggling on something, and then they finally like have that au fait moment can be really powerful just to see. So it's kind of both sides, like problem solving on either side, and just kind of fun.
I work with Marken in our CTO meetings, and she comes and she helps brainstorm with us and helps us kind of stay on pace and on track with what we're doing. They give us kind of inspiration. We can talk to them and go back and forth about their ideas and what they think we could expand on in our classrooms, and so it's really a nice relationship.
What sound does this one make? Ah.
Phyllis Kurvinsky is an elementary reading specialist who also works with both teachers and students.
You know, you see a lot of growth in children at this age when it comes to reading. I mean, you're moving from kids who might not know any letter sounds, so all of a sudden they can read.
Do it together. R, S, T. What's that word?
But what I love is when you're working with a kindergartner and they've learned some letter sounds, and then all of a sudden, you've been working on taking those sounds and blending them into a word, and when they do that by themselves, when they read that word, it may sound like not much to you, but the look on their face, like, and they will say, "I can read," and you're like, "Yes, yes, you can read."
This collective effort ensures the delivery of instructional programming finely tuned to meet the diverse needs of all students. Through continuous analysis of student work, adjustments in curriculum pacing, and lesson planning, they ensure that the range of learners within FCCPS is fully supported.
So part of my role as an instructional specialist is coaching teachers. So I meet with teachers to plan collaboratively, and I support them with their unit planning, creating assessments, and even just their daily lesson planning, and also providing resources.
Familiar with every student and teacher by name and necessity, they collaborate closely with grade level and department teams. This strong cooperative bond is not just a facet of their identity, it's the very foundation upon which their work rests. By establishing these connections, they create a nurturing educational environment that supports growth and learning.
One of the things I love about being in FCCPS and being a specialist is I get to work with all the four different capstone projects. So I work with exhibition, I'm a mentor there. I lead the community project in eighth grade, I lead the personal project in 10th grade, and then I also am a supervisor for extended SA student. So I really get to see that student experience, K through 12th grade, with these different culminating projects, that students are leading really innovative ideas and working to improve their understanding of that material, but also of their community.
Beyond their direct engagement with students and teachers, our instructional support team plays a pivotal role in professional development. Working alongside coordinators, they spearhead initiatives designed to enhance the skills and knowledge of our staff, thereby elevating the quality of education across the division.
So we have a wide variety of math courses that we offer, and I think that's something that is great about our school district, where we're a small district, but we offer a lot of really great options for students. So Tuesday through Friday, I'm basically here during Mustang Block, and I run intervention for tier three students who, based on data, show that they need a little bit additional support, keep them up with what's going on in the class. It is also open to students who aren't assigned based on data, so I open it up to those who just have questions or want to come by and get work done. And so I'm starting to see a lot of those students just come by to have a nice welcoming environment of just working on math and asking questions as they arise.
And I would also say it's improved the academic culture here at school as well, because since COVID, I think it's been difficult for kids to collaborate with each other, with teachers, and have that really meaningful face-to-face interaction, because in a classroom, you're in a large group, you can't work with a teacher. And in addition, she's our curriculum expert. She also helps to build new courses. For example, VDOE is implementing the Data Science course. The curriculum really doesn't exist. VDOE is kind of building it as the plane is in the air, so Ms. O'Keefe is partnering with our teacher who's teaching that course to help make sure that course gets built in a way that it can be, you know, effectively taught to the student.
The daily activities of our instructional support team paints a picture of versatility and dedication to champion the success of every student and teacher at FCCPS.
So when that happens, it's like, whoop, this is a great job.
That's great. Well, that's perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Brett, for putting that together. That was a great, great video, and I think it definitely highlights the, I think, the lack of understanding that many in the public have about who's actually teaching students. It's not just teachers, it's all the people that support that, and obviously, teachers have a critical role, but I know, in my years as a teacher, I surely, when I closed the door, I was by myself for most of the day, so it's great to see that we have a supportive team that helps our teachers do a tremendous job. Do we have any questions for Dr. Noonan, as he mentioned, about the video or with instructional support? Okay. All right, thanks again, Mr. Brett, for putting that together for us. All right, we're going to move on to Section 3, Recognitions and Reports. We're going to, with 3.01, Resolution 02-24, Women's History Month. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Tice to go ahead and introduce the resolution. Thank you.
Chair, Falls Church City Public School Board Resolution 02-24, Women's History Month. Whereas the month of March is recognized as Women's History Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools are committed to recognizing and celebrating the diverse cultures represented in our community, staff, and students, and whereas Congress first recognized Women's History Week in 1981, expanding to Women's History Month in 1987, and whereas women are over 51% of the population in the United States and 49% of the world population, and whereas women make up 47% of the United States workforce and 74% of the education workforce, and whereas diverse groups of women have been leaders of many of the social movements in the modern era, including voting rights, equal pay, and labor practices, and whereas celebrating Women's History Month is one way that we can honor the many contributions of women to our schools, our community, and our nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board does hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month in Falls Church City Public Schools, and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. I'd like to seek a motion.
Can I make it?
Mr. Anderson?
I move that the School Board approve the adoption of Resolution 2-24, Women's History Month as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy? Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to Resolution 03-24, Irish American History Month. I'm going to ask Ms. Murphy, Murphy, to read this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gould. Falls Church City Public School Board, Resolution 3-24, Irish American Heritage Month. Whereas the month of March is recognized as Irish American Heritage Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools are committed to recognizing and celebrating the diverse cultures represented in our community, staff, and students, and whereas Congress and President George H.W. Bush first recognized Irish American Heritage Month by Special Proclamation in 1992, and whereas one out of every 10 adults in the United States have Irish ancestry, and whereas Irish people first chose to immigrate to the United States in 1715, and whereas there are currently over 30 million Irish Americans residing in the United States, and whereas celebrating Irish American Heritage Month is one way that we can honor the many contributions of Irish Americans to our schools, our community, and our nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board does hereby proclaim March 24, March 2024, as Irish American Heritage Month in Falls Church City Public Schools, and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I'd like to seek a motion for Resolution 03-24. Ms. Henderson?
I move that the School Board approve the adoption of Resolution 03-24, Irish American History Month as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy? Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. All right, now we're going to move on to Resolution 04-24, Equity in Education Month. I'd like to ask Ms. Henderson.
Falls Church City Public School Board, Resolution 04-24, Equity in Education Month. Whereas Falls Church City Public Schools believes each child in our public education system deserves to receive what they need, when they need it, to advance student outcomes, and whereas inequities in schools have become an increasingly significant challenge in the United States and Virginia, and whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life, and whereas it is important for Falls Church City families, the School Board students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges of the school community, and whereas the Falls Church City Public Schools has established the division-level equity team as well as school-based teams to engage staff and students in making recommendations and to stay at the forefront of action and discussions to positively impact the welcoming and courageous spaces of FCCPS, and whereas the Director of Equity has published an annual equity report detailing the transparent state and focus of FCCPS, and whereas we recognize that inequities in resources, including educational settings, supplies, technology, and buildings, impede student learning. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the FCCPS recognizes the month of March 2024 as Equity in Education Month, with the intention that educational equity best practices and programming be discussed in FCCPS schools, communities, and classrooms during that time.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Can I please seek a motion for Resolution 04-24? Ms. Murphy?
I move that the School Board approve the adoption of Resolution 4-24, Equity in Education Month as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Mr. Anderson? Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, Resolution 04-24 passes. And finally, we have Resolution 05-24, Disability Awareness Month. Mr. Anderson?
Whereas the month of March is recognized as Disability Awareness Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools are committed to recognizing and celebrating the diverse cultures represented in our community, staff, and students, and whereas President Ronald Reagan first recognized Disability Awareness Month in 1987, and whereas 1.3 billion people worldwide, 16% of the world's population, and 1 in 6 people in the United States experience a significant disability, and whereas persons with disabilities have twice the risk of developing conditions such as depression, asthma, diabetes, and stroke, and whereas the theme for Disability Awareness Month 2024 is "A World of Opportunities," and whereas FCCPS works to create and maintain a community in which all can succeed, and whereas honoring Disability Awareness Month is one way that we can honor the many contributions of Americans with disabilities to our schools, our community, and our nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board does hereby proclaim March 2024 as Disability Awareness Month in Falls Church City Public Schools, and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I need to seek a motion for Resolution 05-24. Ms. Henderson?
I move that the School Board approve the adoption of Resolution 05-24, Disability Awareness Month as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Vice Chair Tice, thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, Resolution 05-24 passes. Thank you all for the resolutions. Now we're going to move on to Public Comments, Section 4, Public Comments and Requests. In accordance with the School Board Policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record, be disposition of requests. Ms. Cadell, do we have any verbal public comments?
No, no public speakers tonight.
Ms. Cadell, do we have any written comments?
Yes, we did receive, the School Board received one from Coral Boosters.
Coral Boosters, okay, thank you, Ms. Cadell. And that has been distributed and posted, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. We're going to move on to Closed Meeting, Section 5. We're going to, I'd like to seek a motion for Closed Meeting, 5.01. Ms. Silverman?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the Board convene a closed meeting for the following purposes: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in positions, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, childcare leave requests, and leave of absence, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident employee tuition students and other non-resident tuition students.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Do I have a second? Mr. Anderson, thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Say yes. Any opposed? All right. Dr. Noonan, what is the over-under for how long will be it closed?
I would say it's a five to 10-minute tops closed session.
Great, okay, so at this time, the School Board will convene to a closed session. We'll be back in about 10 minutes or less. Thank you.
Okay, we are back and we are now at Section 5, 5.03. We're going to reconvene to open meeting. Can I please have a motion to reconvene to open meeting? Ms. Murphy?
I move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Ms. Silverman, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Now we're moving to Section 6, Meeting Opening, 6.01. Certify the closed meeting. Mr. Anderson, can I please certify the closed meeting?
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires that a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Vice Chair Tice, thank you. And for Ms. Caddell, can you please do a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right, now we're going to look for consent agenda. We can do unanimous on this, correct? All right, so we're looking for unanimous for the consent agenda for 7.01 personal items, 7.02 student matters, and 7.03 status of FY '24 tuition students grades 2, 5, and 8. Do I have unanimous consent? Yes. Okay. All right. Now we're moving on to Section 8, Approval of 8.01, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement for Certified Employees. So let's go to, I think we'll go right to the motion. Okay, so let's go ahead now. Can I seek a motion for Section 8.01? Ms. Silverman?
I move that the school board approve the collective bargaining agreement for certified employees as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. And then let's do Section 8.02, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement for Non-Certified Employees. Do I have a motion for 8.02? Ms. Henderson?
I move that the school board approve the collective bargaining agreement for non-certified employees as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes for 8.02. Look forward to the new chapter that we have. We appreciate everybody's support. There was clearly a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of collaboration between the Falls Church City staff, FCCC-A, and so we're looking forward to this new chapter. So thank you. So, all right. We will move now on to 8.03, FY '25 Budget Questions and Answers. Dr. Newman or Ms. Michael?
We have two budget questions for this evening, and I'll let Ms. Michael lead those. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Chair Gold, Vice Chair Tice, and the school board. The first new budget question this evening is number 31. We have 17 teachers who are ESOL endorsed and teaching at the secondary campus. That was a super, super short.
Any questions on number 31 ESOL endorsement? Ms. Vice Chair Tice?
I just have a question. I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember the answer. Do teachers at the secondary campus get paid any extra when they have that extra endorsement or that extra caseload?
They may get, they may get extra pay for their endorsement as part of their salary lane adjustment that's done by the coursework that they've taken to get that endorsement, but they don't get extra for, for teaching ESOL students as part of their routine caseload.
Got it. Are any of them considered case managers for those students? Or is that a different, someone else?
Some of them may be case managers. Yes.
Other questions or comments? Okay.
Question number 32. The first part of the question talks about, we have an audit that was completed on February 23rd, and we were identified as a leading ESOL program in the state. We are one of the only divisions that achieved pre-pandemic growth indicators for our multilingual learners, and that growth data was provided. The question also talks about our caseload ratio. We have a caseload ratio of 25 students to one case manager, and that state requirement is 50 to one, so we're at half the level of the state. When we look at our elementary, middle, multi-language learners, they receive ESOL services in their content classes as well as in small group instruction. And at the secondary level, multi-language learners receive support based on their level of ESOL needs and what that necessary services is for their success. When we look at developing programs, it's imperative that we follow federal guidelines regarding segregation and support. So ESOL students are moved into content-embedded support with native English speakers within one to two years of their arrival at the secondary level, and we have zero sheltered, which means multi-language learner-only classrooms at the elementary level. Exposure to native English-speaking peers is one of the main factors in language acquisition. So when we look at our summer program, we provide a fully integrated model for our English-language learners in the summer. All of our teachers, staff for summer school are licensed teachers, and we do provide a full range of data to support our tailored instruction for those students, looking at them by name and by need. When we look at the elementary level for summer school, students receive 90 to 120 minutes of language arts and up to 75 minutes of math instruction per day. Our classrooms are supported by a general education teacher as well as specialists, and our schools do hire ESOL teachers for summer. At the secondary level for the ESOL program, those students are likewise embedded in our summer school program. As we've done in the past, we're working on a memorandum of understanding with Fairfax County Public Schools that will allow us to enroll our secondary multi-language learners in their online ESOL summer programming, which provides a vetted program that we've provided for many years focusing on the acquisition of academic language. So that's a little bit about ESOL and our summer programs.
Questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, the, the answer was, was quite helpful, and I was glad, I was glad to see that there are summer programs that we do participate in for ESOL students. So it seems that summer programming is an option for ESOL students. And so I, you know, I have no doubt that FCCPS does, you know, top the ranks for ESOL. I think we do pretty well with that. I do, I want to say, I think, you know, some of the, I still want to kind of echo what the ESOL committee sent to us, where while we do well, I don't want that just to be a reason to kind of not think creatively about how to provide services to the students who most need it, and so I will just leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Any questions or further comments on question 32, ESOL Summer Opportunities? Okay. So that concludes the 8.03 Budget Questions and Answers, and that concludes our four rounds of questions to Ms. Michael and Ms. Kopic about the budget, and we appreciate the diligence on answering, and obviously Dr. Bates and all the staff that was, that was part of the, the support for getting our understanding and the public's understanding. At this time, we are going to vote for the budget, so we'll hopefully expect Ms. Michael to be clapping at the end of this. I'll be asking for a recommended action, Vice Chair Tice, for 8.03, 8.04, excuse me.
Can I talk about it just for a second?
Absolutely. No, no, no.
I just want to say, first of all, thanks to the board, too. Thank you for your comments back to the staff. I know that many of our staff worked hard into the night to make sure that you all had as much information as possible and necessary to get this budget to a really good place. I appreciate the process. I think that, you know, having the multiple rounds of questions like we've always done and put those up online for transparency, I think it's been really helpful. You know, this is a process that began really in October when our principals and staff were sort of asked, you know, where do we, where do we want to be in the future? What are our needs generally? And then what came forward were really a host of, of great things that I think will ultimately help our, help our school system and help our staff. In the end, you know, we landed on sort of those big pieces that we typically do. I think we've got a really nice compensation package in there for our staff, and I think that we are really building for the future. And I just wanted to say before you vote on it how much I appreciate the support of the board and the work that you've done, and tonight we are requesting your approval of this budget. We did, we did have one modification from the last presentation that we did, and that is, and that came out in the work session last time, and that was with the savings from our health care that we're able to capture, we are recommending as part of the approved, or not the approved budget, but the, now what will be the school board's advertised budget is the addition of a reading teacher at Mount Daniel. And I, and I hope tonight, as you saw Phil Skovinsky on the screen, you see sort of the value of those, those reading teachers at our elementary school, but wanted just to say thanks so much for your support. I know Lori's got her hand up.
Oh, Ms. Silverman, yes.
Dr. Newman, is this a reading teacher, reading specialist, reading interventionist?
It's a reading specialist.
Specialist, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And so I guess a clarification on that is, will they be more focused on kind of reading interventions with students or literacy coaching with teachers? Like, I guess what would be the mix?
It would be a combination of both. I don't know exactly what the percentage mix will be, but you saw, for example, Phil Skovinsky on the screen today, you know, with a kidney-shaped table, working with five kids. That's why our reading specialists and interventionists do work with students, so there will be some pulling of, of groups.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Thanks for the opportunity. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just, I just felt like you all needed some, some kudos for your work, too. So, thanks.
No, appreciate that. Okay. All right. Vice Chair Tice, it's all yours.
Sure thing, yep. I recommend the action that the school board approve for submission to the city manager, the FY 2025 Advertised Operating Fund budget in the amount of $65,229,594, which requires a city appropriation of $52,851,420, as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget with the following modifications: increased compensation expenditures by $104,430 for a 1.0 elementary reading teacher, and reduced health expenditure expenditures by $104,430.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. All right. And let's go ahead and look at 8.05, Approval of Submission to City Manager of FY '25 Food Service Budget. Do I have a motion? Vice Chair Tice?
I recommend the action that the school board approve for submission to the city manager, the FY 2025 Advertised Food Service Budget in the amount of $1,519,553, as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Do I have a second? Ms. Henderson, thank you. Do I have a, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. And finally, 8.06, Approval of Submission to City Manager of FY '25 Community Service Budget. Vice Chair Tice, let's keep it going.
I recommend the action that the school board approve for submission to the city manager, the FY 2025 Advertised Community Services Fund budget in the amount of $2,310,700, requiring a total city appropriation of $107,500, as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Do I have a second? Ms. Henderson, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, so that concludes the approval of all three budgets to, that submitted, and Ms. Michael is clapping if you cannot hear it in the public. So, yes, I appreciate, that is a team effort, as Dr. Newman said, to get that, and when we say team effort, it's not just those in the room, there are significant number of meetings in the public, the community, all the schools, many types of meetings to put this together. So we're really excited about submitting this, and Dr. Newman, can you just briefly walk through the next step? We are presenting this to the city council?
Yes, we are presenting it to the city council for inclusion in the overall city budget, because again, we are all the city, and what, that will be an evening coming up, and you'll be doing that. I'll be sitting alongside of you, if you'd like, and then...
Close, real close, though.
And then ultimately, the city council will take action on the entire city budget that includes the schools in May, and then we will follow up the day after the adoption of the city council here to do any reconciliation that needs to be done based on the transfer from the city council.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Newman. Okay, that sounds great. And then one more comment about this before we move on. Ms. Michael, just to let you know that I think all seven of us on this board have significant experience with board budgets, with budget process, and our own jobs, and our own experiences serving on boards, and more than once, in fact, I think I've heard it from almost everyone, they said this is a very different experience than the standard you set for how we navigate a budget, and the budget question process, and how you present the answers, how your transparency with the budget is just unbelievable, and we really appreciate that, and we're lucky to have you guiding us through this, not just us, but the entire community. So thank you very much. So, all right. So, all right. All right, now we'll move on to 8.07, waiver of first reading and approval and adoption of second reading of policies. I was going to say, Ms. Minton.
Good evening. We have five policies for the board for waiver of first reading and second reading and adoption this evening. All five of them are policies that the board had previously adopted, so we're not moving from numbered to lettered policies, but just updating lettered policies from the VSPA. All five of these have updates proposed by the VSPA as part of the February 2024 policy update. I'm happy to walk through the changes in each of those policies or address any individual questions about those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Minton. Ms. Silverman?
Thank you, Chair Gould. I just wanted to express that I will be voting no on waiving first reading and would rather go through regular order on passing policies. This board has really prided itself on, especially during this past year, on going through a formal process and going through a first reading, going through a second reading, having our discussion in the public. Even if the changes are non-substantive, there still might be community members who are interested in the actual substance of the policy, and I do believe we are eliminating the opportunity for them to be coming and speaking about any concerns they have about the policies. Yes, it is true that a community member can speak about a policy at any point in time, but I doubt that community members are sitting and reading through all of our policies. I think the best way that they are aware of certain policies is when they come up at board meetings. So I will be voting no on waiving first reading. I would rather go through regular order, the way that we have prided ourselves on doing over this past year, and then I will be abstaining on final passage.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, thank you. Having gone through these policies in extensive detail with Ms. Minton before, these particular five, all five, the changes that are proposed are the definition of ministerial, meaning they're literally moving a sentence from one place to another or changing the numbers. And so for that reason, I think handling, I personally think handling them this way is important. However, I do take Ms. Silverman's point very seriously about the opportunity for the community to actually see and understand our policies, and I would like us as a board to discuss at a future meeting how we want to approach policies in general, so that we and the community together are actually looking at all of our policies in a proactive fashion.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Dr. Noonan, we can figure out where to slot that type of conversation at a work session? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Other comments or questions about the policies themselves or the process? Okay, Ms. Murphy?
I just wanted to say briefly that I, after having reviewed the policies with both Bethany and Trish, I'm confident that the ones that we're, you know, put for waiver of first reading tonight are ministerial in nature, and that they, you know, we don't need to have a long discussion about them, so I think it's completely appropriate. But I do understand Ms. Silverman's concern, and it does make sense to me that we have a discussion about this and decide as a board how to move forward in the future on these policies, to make sure that we're all comfortable with them and the language, because they have a lasting impact on our community.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, so now I'll look for a recommended action on 8.07. Do I have a motion? Mr. Anderson?
I moved that the school board waive first reading and approve second reading and adoption of policies CBE, severance benefits, DJA, purchasing authority, DK, payment procedures, DO, non-locally funded programs, and FE, playground equipment as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Ms. Kudel? All right. And Ms. Minton, 8.08, we're going to go back to you for second reading and adoption of policies.
Thank you. For a second reading this evening, there's one policy, JHDA, human research. And I should have said with waiver of first reading as well, many thanks to Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy for their time going through both the policies for waiver, policies for second, and the policy for first reading. We did spend a lot of time going through JHDA and made some substantial changes prior to bringing the policy for first reading. As it's presented to the board tonight, there were no changes from first reading, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about policy JHDA, human research.
Thank you, Ms. Minton. Questions for Ms. Minton? Comments? So we'll look for a motion for 8.08, second reading and adoption of policies. Ms. Teis? Vice Chair Teis?
I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policy JHDA, human research, as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair Teis. Can I have a second? Ms. Henderson, thank you. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. And Ms. Minton, approval of first reading of policies 8.09?
Thank you. There's one policy for first reading this evening. That policy is JOB, Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires. It will be replacing current policy 6.43, which is titled Participation in Surveys. Thanks to Dr. Bates and Dr. Weylandman for going through this. We wanted to make sure that our current policy is reflected in policy JOB. So you'll notice that there were a few items that we added and changed from the VSPA model policy. For example, at lines five through 12, we added an introduction. The definitions for this policy had appeared at the very end of the policy, so similar to JHDA, we moved that up to the beginning of the policy. We also added in the additional protections that were mirrored in policy 6.43, and we added in language about the application of policies to surveys designed, sponsored, and conducted by school staff, and made by students, and supervised by staff. And that would be on the last page of the policy at lines 224 to 236. Would be happy to answer any questions on this proposed policy for first reading, policy JOB.
Thank you, Ms. Minton. Any questions or comments from Ms. Minton? Ms. Henderson, was that a, yes?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Bates, Dr. Weylandman, and Ms. Minton for the amount of effort and time they put into this policy and really making sure that this policy works for our district and takes into account the particular needs of our students and teachers and staff. It was not a small lift, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Other questions or comments for Ms. Minton? Okay. So now I'm looking for a motion for 8.09, approval of first reading of policies. Ms. Murphy?
I recommend that the school board approve first reading of policy JOB, Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Ms. Henderson, thank you. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Minton. All right. Let's see here, future agenda topics. Dr. Noonan, 9.01.
Yeah, thank you. So the future agenda items, we referred one tonight. It sounds like there's a good opportunity for us to, at some point in a work session, slot in a chance to talk about policy and figure out how best to sort of move policies forward. And I think that Ms. Minton and myself would welcome that conversation. Our objective has been to make sure that we kind of keep up with many of the changes and then also move away from the numbered policies that we had had in place to become aligned more with the VSPA model policies. So we would love to have that conversation with all of you, but really, it's your conversation to have with each other. But if there's anything else that you all want to talk about in an upcoming work session, this would be the time to let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan.
We've got a few things that we put out, we'll put out another list in the Friday update, so everybody sees kind of what's on the docket, but I did preview those at the work session, so hopefully you have a sense of what's coming.
Other questions or comments about future agenda items? Okay, so we'll look at the agenda with you all about maybe a possible work session would probably be more ideal for the policy discussion.
Hundred percent.
Okay, sounds great. All right. All right, Dr. Noonan, I don't know what the overland is, but you can really win this if you want to delay your superintendent report, so...
Can we take an hour reset?
Yeah. 10.01, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Gould. So got a full slate of things to talk about tonight. Wellness, equity, and belonging is sort of one of those big categories as part of the strategic plan. One thing that was requested is that we talk about the art here in the city hall chambers. And in honor of the 75th anniversary of the city, it's an undertaking of a project to display art here in the chamber, new art. The city wants to commission portraits that reflect the rich and diverse history of the little city, and will bring a fresh look to the chamber. So if you have ideas of who should go on the walls, there is a survey on the city's website, the general government's website, so please take a look at that, and March 18th would be the time to get those in. Instantly, Mary Ellen Henderson comes to mind. Instantly, Marion Costner Selby comes to mind. There may be some folks that we want to think about that had an impact in the educational arena. So if you think of others, you know, certainly feel free to put those in, and that goes to the public as well. It is Women's History Month, as was noted this evening by Vice Chair Teis. Thank you for reading that resolution. As part of developing our K-12 inclusive local history curriculum, middle and high school students had an opportunity to learn about women's history in the City of Falls Church through a panel presentation at our secondary schools. This was the first middle all-school assembly in years, and they were a really great audience. It was called the Falls Church Past, Present, and Your Future. Speakers included the mayor, Letty Hardy, Nikki Grove Henderson, Marty Masurv, restaurant owner of Ellie Bird, and New and Chasing Tales and Role Play. The speakers connected remarkable women to our community's history and the city that we have today. They told stories about getting involved, launching businesses, and making change, encouraging students to get involved and participating with enthusiasm around some of the work in our community. So I want to thank all of them for their incredible support of our schools and for coming. With respect to IB teaching and learning, this was a really busy month for us with IB. We had our PYP exhibition last Thursday at Oak Street Elementary, where our fifth graders wowed us with their exhibition projects. A little shout out to my group, just a personal privilege here, they did a great job, so way to go, Penelope and Ewan. Students explored topics that were of concern to them. They used multiple library sources, online databases, and interviewed experts in their field. After gathering all that information, they did these big trifold presentations, developed websites, developed their speaking and talking points, and many of the topics that were included were things such as pollution, equal pay, equity in education, systemic racism, LGBTQIA+ rights, animal cruelty, and more. And they all just did a phenomenal job. We also had the IB showcase at Meridian yesterday, and students presented during the school day and into the evening with our families. And these were 10th graders doing their NYPD projects. Again, this is another one of those passion projects that students get a chance to work towards, research a topic of their interest. And some of the topics that came out as part of the PYP included fashion design, various baking and cooking skills and techniques, how to start a podcast, creating a children's book, learning Java, and more. Students participated in the self-directed inquiry by planning, taking action, and reflecting on the process. Our 11th grader student, our 11th grade students presented their TOK exhibitions, and 12th grade students were featured in the Creativity, Action, and Service, the cast video, highlighting their projects. So it was a really big experience for us in the last seven days with respect to IB. Also want to congratulate the Odyssey of the Mind students. More than 130 students at Oak Street took place, took part on 21 different teams at the regional Odyssey of the Mind, and four teams are advancing to our states. Odyssey of the Mind is a creative problem-solving program that teaches students how to think divergently by providing open-ended problems that appeal to various interests, and students solve those problems by writing skits, sewing costumes, making props, and depending on the problem choice, building vehicles, technical elements, and balsa wood structures. Also want to thank, as an aside to that, the parent volunteers that have taken on the challenge of helping coach some of these OM teams. Through their support, it's been extraordinary and very successful. The First Robotics Tournament is coming to Meridian High School. We're very excited about that. For the first time ever, Meridian will be hosting the First Robotics Tournament on Saturday, March 23rd, and Sunday, March 24th, and everyone in the community is welcome to come and attend and watch Team 14/16 battle the 30 other teams that are coming. And if you have never been to an event like this, I would encourage you to stop by, because it's something special and extraordinary, and it'll have the same energy that you would find at any major sporting event. So please join us for the First Robotics Competition at Meridian, and for those that are coming from out of the city, we hope that you will enjoy one of our fine restaurants here in the City of Falls Church. And then lastly, resource management and continuous improvement. We are excited to announce more publicly, and it's been in the morning announcements, but here also, that the parking garage on the east parking lot is now open for business. It is free for the first two hours and an hourly charge thereafter. And so if you're looking for detailed directions on how to use that visitor parking garage, you can refer to the visitor parking webpage on our website, where there's a great graphic that shows all the parking. So if you think about where the medical building is, right behind that is a parking structure, and that is open. And again, for the first two hours, it's free, and it's an easy way to get in and get out for a short meeting at the high school or the middle school. And then doesn't put down pressure also on our other parking surfaces, so it's really great. And then finally, yesterday, we celebrated by opening the new weight room at Meridian with a ribbon cutting. The equipment upgrade and reorganization is a result of the Falls Church Ed Foundation that gave us a super grant, and the Mustang Athletic Boosters. And the project was led by our one and only athletic trainer, Vicki Gallagher, and PE teachers PJ Anderson and Courtney Gibbons. In addition to many student athletes, all students and employees can be using that training room and be trained there as well. And we are looking forward to seeing students in our multiple programs, our cafeteria staff, and many others using the space. And I know Dr. Bates, last night, spent some of his time with the Ed Foundation, and they started their evening in the weight room, not working out, but looking at the equipment, which, you know, it's a good start. But anyway, just, it was a really great day, and if you have a chance to get down to the bottom floor of the high school to check that out, it's really worthwhile. So that's it for me for the evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. And a question about the art survey. I know this is managed through the city council, correct? Do we know how the decision will be made on the choices, I think, that they presented? Is it based on strictly on the survey, or are they making a different decision and using that as feedback?
I don't know. I'm presuming that they're looking for feedback and ideas, and then I don't know what their algorithm is going to be with respect to making decisions, so...
Great, okay.
Might want to reach out to the mayor?
Yeah, no, that'd be good to clarify. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Dr. Noonan. Yeah, it sounds like a lot of excellent activity, especially with, in terms of the theme of IB. So it's exciting, a lot of events, I think a number of us were, have been attending those events, which is exciting. Yeah, and the robotics, that we always appreciate when the robotics team comes in and gives their presentation. It's one of the few presentations from student groups that the students do the entire presentation, and so it's fun to hear their experiences in it. And you're right, it is not just a varsity team, but I think they spend more hours than most of our sports teams. So I think they also take pride in that secretly, so it's exciting. Lots of great activity. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Now we're going to move on to Section 11, Board and Student Liaison comments. We usually start with our student liaison, but Mr. Shawn Lowen was not able to attend tonight's meeting, I think possibly a first, so we will have his comments ready for next time. And we'll just go down the line with Mr. Anderson. You want to kick us off?
So the only update I have is the Wreckin' Parks Board met on Valentine's Day, and so it was a lovely time had by all. The big news there is that they are looking at the HVAC project, HVAC replacement project for the community center. It has apparently been a system that was put in place in 1968, and so there's a lot of overhaul, and they're looking to do geothermal similarly to our, similar to our high school. So that would require lots of work, and the community center could be shut down for up to 12 weeks. And so that was quite a shock to me as well. And so they are trying to time it to where it doesn't impact summer programming, because that is a big resource for the community. So that is the update.
No updates?
Nothing new to report from health and wellness, but on the legislative front, I believe the General Assembly has finished its business, and it'll just be interesting to see how things move along with the governor. So it's, we're going to kind of sit and wait and see.
see mode.
Sure, I did. I also attended, along with Dr. Bates last night, the Education Foundation meeting. And we started in the weight room for touring it. And I just have to echo Dr. Noonan's comments. It was, it is such an impressive space. It was so beautiful, and it was really exciting to see how thoughtful and how collaborative the space is, and how intentional all of the, all of the groups that were contributing to it, how intentional they were to make sure that the use was like diverse and inclusive for not just athletes, but trying to include staff and general students and all of the sports medicine. It was really, really exciting. So if you're ever in the high school and have a chance to go look at it, it's really impressive. It's nicer than most gyms I've ever worked out in. And so then after that, during the Regular Education Foundation meeting, there was a lot of great talk about how they're celebrating their 20th year anniversary and kicked off the ticket sales for the gala. So those are available online for those interested in attending. It's always a fun time. And Chair Gould and I went to office hours. We had office hours at Taco Rock last, was it last week, I think? Had a special guest appearance from a former chair down. Coincidentally, she didn't come to speak to us, but that was a fun surprise. We had two parents come speak to us, one who wanted to, had a really interesting conversation about whether our academic policies appropriately address neurodivergence or if they are sort of a one-size-fits-all model that should be reevaluated. So that was an interesting conversation. And also the impact, of course, on AI that is just a continual conversation, I think, especially on the secondary campus and in education in general. But that was really an interesting conversation. And then we had a parent come speak about athletics, advocating for rightsizing our athletic staff, and noting that 60% of the students' grades eight through 12 participate in athletics, and whether we have the appropriate staffing from an administrative level. So that was office hours. Chair Gould, are you going to talk about budget and finance?
Uh, no.
The city's meeting?
Oh, the April 1st?
No, the one last month. Yes?
Yeah, I thought that was the last meeting, but no.
Oh, okay. No, it was right after our last meeting. So Chair Gould and I both attended the city's budget and finance committee. I'm not sure there was any really top-level summary, anything Ms. Michael wants to share. I was there, I promise.
No, me too, as I'm thinking through. They really were going through and looking at housing and affordable housing, and really trying to think about policy development and other components. So it was a great way, I think, for them to gather feedback. And they have multiple different working groups. I'm giving them input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Ms. Murphy?
Sure. So I attended the daycare advisory board meeting last night, March 11th. We started off with a really great update from the supervisor at Oak Street. I feel like I learned a lot. They're doing all sorts of fun things. I felt almost sorry that I have teenagers who can't be a part of daycare anymore, except that my one teenager is driving, so I don't regret that. We also had a really great presentation on the new fee scale for daycare that is under consideration. And that fee scale applies to families who pay a reduced fee. It was received unanimous support, and I look forward to seeing it potentially take effect.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Thank you, everybody, for attending meetings and bringing this back for all of us. So it's great. We can attend and represent in so many different ways. Alright, now we're moving on to Section 12, Approval of Minutes. We have three sets of minutes that we're going to be approving. We're going to do unanimous consent on this. So, Ms. Skidell, please be ready to cheer when this is all done. Nope. David's update. Do you have that ready?
I have it.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Ortiz was not here. Mr. Ortiz was not here tonight. He did submit a update, so we'll go ahead and read that into the record. Okay, thanks, Ms. Tice.
Okay. The Mustang Athletic Boosters Association, I trust that Dr. Noonan provided a detailed update regarding the successes of our athletes as they closed out the winter season, the springs.
They're great.
The spring start season has started, and games will be starting soon. One major update is that next Saturday is Mulch Madness. Unfortunately, the date to order was March 5th, but please keep a lookout for your stangs as they make their deliveries today. Also, Mustang Athletic Boosters Association is working with FCCPS to raise funds for a new scoreboard for the Meridian Bowl. Coral boosters met on March 5th. Topics on the agenda included karaoke night, coral assessments, and camp, among others. The boosters have organized a lesson program, might be run by my husband, which is growing quickly, which is terrific, because private study is a great way to develop your skills. And band boosters, he was not able to attend that meeting. However, Meridian's Got Talent was last Friday, March 8th, and it was a huge success, as you saw in the morning announcements today. I appreciated the picture of the mosh pit that was created by the end of the night. That was super fun. That's my own commentary. And the Meridian Wind Ensemble jazz and rock bands are going to New York City from April 1st through 3rd and will be playing at Carnegie Hall. Very impressive.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice and Mr. Ortiz for submitting. So I appreciate that. Alright. Alright, now we're going to 12, Section 12, Approval of Minutes. So I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to approve the minutes of January 17th, 2023, February 14th, 2023, and February 13th, 2024, as presented. Alright, Skidell, congratulations. Those are done. And now we're going to move on to Section 13, Materials for Board Review. And as we said, this is for materials for board review we do internally. This is 13.01 FCCPS enrollment, 13.02 monthly budget monitoring report. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Noonan or team on either of these items? Alright, well, thank you.
Before you adjourn, I just want to say, while this meeting has gone fast, it's not by accident. It is really because of the work that you all have done in advance of tonight. All of the budget meetings that you've held, all of the budget work sessions that you've held. Tonight was sort of an administrative meeting to try to get some things across the line. And the things, if you look at the list of things that got across the line tonight, the first collective bargaining agreement in the history of, you know, first collective bargaining agreement in Falls Church, plus our budget to move it to the school board's advertised budget, these are big nuggets, so big rocks. So I just want to say thanks to all of you for doing that work. And you should feel good about where you are, and just being able to kind of move things, move things forward. So don't feel bad about a fast meeting. You've done a lot of work on the front end.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. And I think no one feels bad about a fast meeting. So, but yeah, no, we appreciate that. Good reminder about where things are at the macro level for all of us. So thank you very much. Alright, with that, we'll go ahead and move to the board meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.